Right. Ready?
Ready.
Welcome to the Republican Governor's Board of Supervisors meeting, special meeting at seven o'clock on April ninth, two thousand point five. That's it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
It really felt like the way it stands.
David.
So brother.
Good see.
Yeah, I'd make a motion we allow Mr. O'Brien's participation in the motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Goode on paper.
Aye.
He's not, he can't.
But he can go. Chair votes five zero.
And you just need to state your, uh, where you're located and the reason for calling up.
Well, I am located on two fifty in a broken down vehicle right now, so that's my reason.
That's awesome.
All right. At least it's not a snowstorm. Weren't you in it? You were caught somewhere in a snowstorm one time, I think.
Oh, yeah, it took like eight hours to get home. I mean, I got home. There were a lot of other people home too.
All right, anybody, uh, are there any changes in the agenda?
No.
Do you want to?
Make your motion is Dr. agenda. Say it second.
Motion made by Mr. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Goode on paper.
Aye.
Chair votes five zero. County Minister's report.
County Minister's report considered.
All right, we're opening our first round of public comments. Please keep it to five minutes and address the board and also remember please that this is about anything and everything you want to talk about other than the equalized rate. Anybody want to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to, um, public hearing, item A, equalize real estate tax rate, Mr. Goode.
Yeah, no, I will, I'll actually hand it off to Ms. Mel.
No.
Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We're here tonight to discuss calendar year twenty five real estate tax rates. Next slide, please. So during a reassessment year per the Code of Virginia fifty eight, one dash thirty three, twenty one, when a reassessment results in an increase of one percent or more in total property tax levy, a public hearing must be held. Notice must be given to the public at least seven days prior to said hearing, and advertisements were ran, including a review and the daily progress with required notice per the code. Next slide. Our current and proposed tax rates in FY twenty five, real estate rate was zero point eight four four, and we have FY twenty six proposed rate of zero point seven five zero. The overall total assessed value of real property increased by twenty two point fifty five percent, which resulted in an equalized tax rate of zero point six eight nine. And again, our current advertised FY twenty six real property tax rate is zero point seven five, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
First question? Thank you. All right. Yep. Uh, we'll now open up to the public hearing and again, please keep your comments directed towards the tax rates and or assessments as they might. Anyone? Yes, sir. Please, please, yeah.
My name is Don Bellamy and currently own sixty seven Thomas Jefferson Parkway here in Polmire. Uh, my wife and I, we purchased, um, forty six acres in our home here in Polmire in twenty twenty, the November of twenty twenty one. At that point, you know, what brought us here, my work changed from the West Coast to the East Coast, and so I had the opportunity to, um, choose where we live, where we live. Property tax was a very important consideration in terms, of course, obviously, the opportunity to purchase into that account. Open space was very important in how you manage your accounting in terms of protecting against, um, urban expansion similar to what's happening up north. So for that reason, you know, it was very important, so we made the decision to purchase into that account. Since we purchased our home and, you know, it's, you know, we're not unique, um, property values have increased. Um, the property tax on our particular property, um, if we were to base it on the estimate that came out that was, that was sent to us, our property tax would have increased in the last ten years over a hundred and fifty percent. And so, you know, that certainly got my attention because, uh, you know, that was estimated at three thousand dollars, uh, year over year, a thirty nine percent increase. So hence, you know, it was pretty eye catching and, and, uh, pretty impressive that in one year my taxes would increase potentially up to forty nine, up to forty percent. So, you know, that was one of the things that brought me here this evening was, you know, and I've done my research and met with county, met with the appraisal services and had very good conversations and all of the above. And our particular property is a historical property and sales and comparables are limited on those kinds of properties. Um, you know, we'd had discussions, um, you know, solid construct, constructed discussions with the appraiser and, uh, had relative success there in terms of estimating, you know, projecting our assessed value. My point here in terms of the tax rate, number one, express appreciation for the published tax rate going from point eight four four down to point seven five, that is a significant decrease and well in line with the average for the state of Virginia. And, you know, if you look at Alvermile County, Loudoun County, and Fairfax County, and all those other counties, it's a pretty, you know, it's a fair tax rate. And again, thank you for doing that, um, because that, it did make a difference in where we landed and what our actual property taxes are likely going to be, um, and they won't be the, you know, we're probably going to increase about twenty percent year over year. Still impressive. Um, but my point is, is that we came here because of what Fuana County is and, uh, people were friendly, you know, we could, we could have bought anywhere in Virginia. We didn't, we bought here and invested in this community. And so, um, you know, my point is, number one, the land use um, is critical. You know, we have basically, um, you know, resident, uh, residents as well as pasture and timber trade. We just harvested timber, you know, so we, you know, so we're basically farming our property. Now, but at the same time, you know, again, that land use, uh, benefit is critical to maintaining your open space, in my opinion. Um, my background is within the Farm Credit System, Hispanic career with Northwest Farm Credit out of Spokane, Washington, as well as, um, worked as an appraiser, you know, within the operating system. And so, you know, I'm familiar with the process and familiar with, you know, basically making sure my values are fair and that I understand how the tax rates are, especially when the tax rates are claiming and climbing as quickly as possible here in Fuana County. Um, so again, those are just my comments, my observations, specific to my situation. I can't speak for anybody else. But, uh, you know, it was an impressive letter that I got from Fuana County on what my projected property taxes were going to be. You know, going from basically sixty two hundred dollars a year to over almost ten thousand a year, um, was jaw dropping. And again, you know, I just wanted to appreciate the drop in the rate. Um, and I still have ongoing discussions on, you know, where we're going to land on our property value just because of the lack of, um, comparable sales for historical property. Um, and recent, uh, one particular sale that, uh, you know, supports, you know, kind of where I'm anticipating to land. Anyway, that's, that's why I'm.
Thank you. And you know, I recognize you're always out by the mail.
That's me.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the, uh, public hearing. A discussion.
What I, what I've been doing is, uh, when I talk to landowners that have an issue with their thing, I always, you know, you can do your own research, but the best thing you can do is contact a Realtor and get one of those comparative market analysis. And then if you don't like it, go to another one.
Well, I think there's a, uh, multiple probably computer programs that they just entered the data in and if.
You can.
Is the market value or estimate market value.
But that's only as good as the information you put in or the algorithm is on it, whereas when you go to a real estate agent, they're familiar with the market area. Most of these people have lived here a long time, and that's a very valuable tool for them.
But I had a couple of things, um. One is that I think we're all baffled by the fact that you have to put the current tax rate on the tax statement or the assessment statement by law. The current tax rate was the newly assessed value, which absolutely tells you the amount that it's not going to be unless once you equalize, you bounce back up to that amount. But, um, it seems a shame to me that that state mandates it that way. It's such a odd way that confuses so many people.
So they just have.
No, go ahead, Mr.
I was just gonna say they, they're just, you have to use the rate that it currently is.
Yeah.
Is where you're stuck. Now, where we end up. And I had somebody reach out to me, very dear friend who usually calls me up and fusses at me for about two days because he's going to pay more tax, more in tax. But, uh, this year, what? He, he said, please tell me Louisiana's going to do like they've done and not reap the bounty of high reassessment. Like many of the counties around us are doing. And I said, well, here's where we're standing. I said, it's still going to go up some, but it's not going up as much as it could go up if we were to say we're going to stay at eighty eight four. So.
Yeah. Such as like Louis.
Well, whomever, and, and Alvermile's asking for, what was it, five cent increase?
Extra four cents.
Yeah, extra four cents.
On top of it.
On top of where they are this year. And I mean, you know, I'm not trying, they got to do what's right for them. And I think we, we definitely do I wish we were at fifty four cents like we were fifteen, twenty years ago? Yeah. But when you consider that the things that we've done, the debt that we're paying. And I think, um, don't correct me if I'm wrong. Of the seventy five cents, about twenty of it is going to be to debt service, to pay for infrastructure that we have to have in order to get businesses to come here.
Yeah, our debt service payment as well. What's about, I think we have a budget around nine millions.
Yeah, about, about eighteen to twenty cents, about seventy five cents. And so, I mean, so we're, we're working on that fifty four, fifty five cent. Budget, but we had to put the infrastructure in there. Like I said, when I go to VACO meetings and I sit down with the board supervisors from Fairfax, who the chair is a good friend of mine, and he goes, y'all are going to be a hundred percent covered by broadband in Fluvana? And I went, yeah, by the end of twenty twenty six.
Actually, I thought it would be sooner than twenty twenty.
Well, that's, that's supposed to be the drop dead end, right? By the, uh, uh, twenty twenty five, it's the end of this year.
And real quick, just in case anybody didn't believe that Tony O'Brien has broken down the side of the road, him walking around down the side of the road.
Oh, geez.
Reaching in and grabbing it. Uh, uh, gas can would suggest he didn't break down. So anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, he's laughing, dude.
No, 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 it's not, it's not the gas can. It's, um, uh, I don't know, it broke down the other day. I took it into the, uh, the place. They said they couldn't find anything wrong with it, but just in case, it's, I mean, it's got a quarter tank in it, so I don't know. But anyhow, that's not the case.
I was just going to say to your point, you know, this is my first reassessments being on the board. Has, has the assessment letters, and I've got to point to this, has the assessment letters in the past that you all know have always shown the current tax rate? Cause I, I.
I believe you.
Yes. Well, I thought that it was a newer law that required that. No, okay.
They've been legalized, raised a newer law that changed.
Okay.
And I think, I suspect the dramatic increase in values is what made it.
Okay.
Where everybody.
I thought I had seen a delegate post something on Facebook that, you know, this was the first year that he did something, said it claimed it was for, you know, transparency purposes or whatever. Um, and I thought that that maybe was the first year that the tech, the current tax rate had shown against the assessments, but you're saying it was the equalized rate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I don't believe, I don't believe it's done it. It's different than previous.
Okay. The thing I would like to see on there is we, when we send it out, we know what the equalized rate is going to be. And we know what the previous rate is. Why can't you have a chart that goes from the equalized rate to the old rate? And say it's going to fall somewhere in this chart. I mean, I think, Mr. Wait, correct me if I'm wrong, but state, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I think state code says it's either the rate that you have currently or unless the board has.
That, that's some counties.
That's the minimum that you have to put. You can add more information than what you have.
Yeah.
Some counties that assess annually, they'll say, here's the rate it's going to be, and that will be in the notice. This is our max rate. They already had that set when the notice goes out, but you can put additional information. So I mean.
If we were going to do that, we would just have to move some of the budget stuff up sooner.
Well, well, we would, but remember this year was an odd year. I mean, because normally the reassessments are coming out in November, November timeframe, and we're not, we're not even near close to even thinking about budget and tax rates. Yeah, this, this year is a little different. Like I said, it all kind of coincides with one another, so.
Um, only other thing I'd add. Mr. Bellamy brought up land use. There's a lot of conversation about land use, um, last week. I'll just point out that it was in response to concerns mentioned by a citizen who, of course, they want to respond to as much as we can to citizens' concerns. Um, I wouldn't want it taken that at least I, and I, I think most if not all board members were not in any way saying we're looking at, um, getting rid of land use. There's not many things that I'll publicly say as far as how I'm going to vote before I get there. But I can't imagine there's anything in this world that would make me vote to get rid of land use. I think it's one of the great tools we have to help keep our rural community and to help keep our taxes down, understand when people disagree and we're twenty eight thousand people with a bunch of different perspectives, but we want to make it clear for the citizens, I, I don't see anything coming that's going to change that, at least in the near future. Certainly not my vote.
I would agree, yeah. I mean, this certainly, you know, talk of, well, it's been brought up several times in the last meeting and or previous meetings, and I'm, I, I think you pretty much hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's something that, no matter what side of that issue you're on, you're, you're, you feel some, some sort of way about it. Um, but I think you know, uh, when it comes to safeguarding, you know, our rural character, I mean, that's certainly a key, a key aspect of that, but at the same time, you know, uh, I think it was Ms. Kilpatrick who spoke last week, who's also on, um, working as District Planning Commissioner, and, and she has had spent a lot of time in state government and gave, you know, a great explanation as to why it is something that it's important, it is something, um, that, um, you know, the state came up with, what was it? When did she say?
Nineteen seventy something.
Something like that, yeah.
Seventy four?
Yeah.
Early seventy.
Right. Um, and so in, in, in a county like ours, it has a lot of value and, um, uh, you know, some of the, some, some arguments that have been made are that, you know, um, you know, folks with houses or things like that may levy, you know, share more of the, the tax burden, but then again, if, you know, if you have a lot of land, land doesn't require community services. You know, houses do require community services. Um, and so, uh, community services are what drives tax rates and, and things like that. So, um, I think you make some good points, Mr. Fairchild, and I know you, you probably have some thoughts.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not going to spend a lot of time about it. I mean, I, I hope y'all were able. Did it help the, the meeting? Did y'all get a chance to listen to that? If you did, I mean, those guys are far better explaining it than I ever could be.
Well, I can just say I haven't listened to it yet, and thank you for, for, you know, trying to get that out there. But, um, I, I'm, I'm a believer in it.
But, as, as am I, and if, and those of us that were on the fence, you asked if it was a contentious vote last time. There were some thoughts about looking at it from some of the supervisors, but after those six ex, well, I believe, after those six people spoke of it, it was like, whoa, this is why it's there. Now, are there some things that could be tweaked in it? Maybe, but, uh, people that own a family farm that get passed down, handed, handed down in family names, that allows them to, the ability to keep that farm. Whereas, you know, these people are, they might farm on the side. You got fifty acres and, you know, like, sorry, I forgot your name, but he talks about the trees. If you've got pines, or if you've got oaks or whatever trees are on there, if you're cutting those trees every so often, you are farming that land.
Yeah.
And that is, uh, Ms. Kilpatrick, you're exactly right. She hit the nail on the head, and I just love the historical perspective she gave of. She told us why they did it, when they did it, what the reasons behind it say. And like I said, I'm just rambling if I talk. We get it.
All right, anybody else have any discussion? On this item?
What, I will have one question.
Yep.
Everything still dead, 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 still.
Budget wise, yes. Yeah, well, yeah, well, after.
The only reason I was asking is if we had forty thousand from somewhere, I would look, entertain the thought of possibly doing a fifth deputy for half a year. But that's, oh my God, I got that chair again.
Sorry. Yeah, nothing's changed.
Yeah, yeah. So, so from the public hearing, there's no action. Again, you know, just by state code, uh, the way it lists is we have to have a, a, a public hearing separately from the budget public hearing. It might be on separate dates. And again, so we've got the equalized tax rate hearing this evening. We got the budget, uh, budget public hearing and those associated tax rates with the budget of next week, uh, April sixteen. So again, this is just for clarity on, on, on what's happening, uh, with, with the equalized tax rate.
All right. Well, it's in the conversation. No motions to be made. Move on to unfinished business. FY twenty six budget discussion. Sounds like you've probably.
Like we just did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do not have any changes in revenues or, or anything like that. Again, you know, really at this point, from a budgetary standpoint, I think it really gets down to if, if the board wants to make any changes with what's existing there, but um, again, we don't have any candy free tax rates. There's no additional revenue, so that's kind of, that's kind of what the budget stands as.
Anybody else, any comments or questions?
Like I said, if we had an additional, I was going to suggest that we had to, if, if we don't. Well, thank you. All right, we worked hard. I think we got it. We, we've done the best we can do with that.
All right, well, looks like we're moving on to new business. Anything you guys want to talk about? All right, we're going to move on to our second round of public comment. Please keep your comments structured to the board and that five minutes, anybody who wants to speak? Seeing none? Yeah, it's you. All right.
I'll be with it, well.
Yeah. He's never read very well.
No, it's not in that picture.
Close session?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move the Fuana County Board of Supervisors enter into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A one and section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A eight for personal matters to discuss employees of the Department of Emergency Services and legal matters, employees of the Department of Emergency Services, and insurance proceeds related to the pit store fire building.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Hon, seconded by Mr. Sheridan, on paper.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. O'Brien?
Gas can.
He's muted. He is muted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to abstain because I, I'm not going to be able to be in the meeting privately, so. Um, I'll just catch up with Mr. Doll on the details.
Send a, send a text if you need somebody to bring you something. All right, so.
Thank you.
Chair votes aye, so we have what, three and four?
Yeah, I won't be in the meeting. I, I won't be in the meeting.
Four zero one.
All right, that four zero one. All right. We're now in close session.
We're now in close session.
Yeah, nice to meet you guys.
Thank you.
Eric.
We, we don't know roughly where Tony is, do we?
Yeah, I can run up there.
No. You know, I'm having a gander.